Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, September 19th. Please stand for approval.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a quick.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for all that are gathered here this evening and those that couldn't make it. I thank you for our community. I thank you for all those that serve this community and serve their neighbors. Watch over us, I thank you for your grace and humility and watch over this community as we move forward in the future. Thank you, Heavenly Father. Amen.
It is being recorded for rebroadcast purposes. There is no indication that section is held. There will be a five-minute per person limit for comment on agenda items only. Please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes. At this time. Okay? Seeing none, we'll move on to action items. September 5th meeting minutes for approval. Gentlemen, have any changes?
None, forbidden. I did not see any.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the September 5th meeting minutes. As presented.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have fire company station numbers. You guys recall at the last meeting, we held at Smokes Town, there was a presentation made by Dennis Gall about the merged fire company that's going to take place January 2nd, I think they said, of 2025. And we have also been contacted on behalf of the fire companies about the number, the 17 number from county, and we briefly discussed it at our last meeting. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on all of that right now, or if you guys have what to do with that?
Well, we also heard from one of our fire chiefs about how it could be a safety factor by the new company and the old company still having a 17 number. And with that being the case, it seems like there needs to be something done about that. We don't want to put any of our first responders in jeopardy out on a call.
You know, I've been talking to all the fire departments for all the months that I've been here and since before. The merger was always an object of attention and what we've been trying to work towards, and we're getting very close to one right now. And I think that's, again, we talk about personnel, money, and apparatus, and I think these two departments that are merging together is, they're trying to make sure that they're operating well in the future for the betterment of our community. And so if they're asking for this, and I think that should be, and then on top of what we heard last month or last meeting about, you know, coming over the radio calls and being confusing, I don't see why we wouldn't act on that request.
I kind of echo all of you guys. You know, with the safety reason they were talking about it at Smokes Town, and then we heard the whole story about the past, when the 1-7, I guess, number it was, it was 1-7, and then they went to 1-17, 1-2, and 3, that was all done for a reason of merging. And obviously, it's two of them merging, one's not going along with it, so my thought is that we do follow through with that, with the number, and then add the one station that gets its own number. If they talk about joining, obviously, they said that the doors always open for them and other departments in the area, so that's always a good thing, but we have a responsibility of looking for the future for the township and firefighting, and this is a step in that direction. Something else we talked about at the last meeting was about the police SSU outside for the fire police. So I were expecting an answer to that tonight, I think, from the fire department to see if they do want to go ahead with that. If not, we're going to obviously talk about that and put in first municipal. But if you guys recall, I had said if we do donate it like we had discussed last time, the supervisors also have some skin in the game with the future of firefighting for East Co'calico Township. So if that is, if the new station, Co'calico Area Fire Department, is the future of the township for firefighting, we have to do our diligence to support that.
I agree with you, Mr. President.
All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion to approve station number 17 for the Co'calico Area Fire Department, and station number, I'll leave it up to whatever Stevens Fire Company would like to decide for that to be, and to submit the same station numbers to Lancaster County Block Communications for required programming.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we got Resolution 2024-21, Tom.
Board will recall June of this year granting preliminary final plan approval for industrial development on Industrial Way. The township traffic engineer and the applicant's engineer took a look again at the traffic temps to determine the traffic impact study, and the applicant is due a credit for two trips contributing to some space that is existing today. So whereas the traffic impact fee was established by a resolution of the Board of June, a resolution to apply, that resolution is needed for the board tonight. The resolution does just that, setting the fee at the appropriate amount.
And that fee, $70,829.
Correct. That number was less than previously. Yeah, it was, it's $3,014 represents two trips.
I'll make a motion about Resolution 2024-21 to grant revised preliminary final land development and lot add-on plan approval for a review in a land development at Industrial Way.
Second, ma'am.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Resolution 2024-22, the pent-up winter service agreement.
An agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to provide treatment on certain state roads in town.
And it didn't get any better, right? They didn't give us more money than last year?
It's set by Harrisburg. It's set for anyone, but everybody gets the same amount.
No. There was an increase this year or less?
Yeah, about 2% and for the years following, 2% as well.
Better than a decrease.
Cross goes up 30% to 2%. That's good.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-22 to approve a winter services agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Second, ma'am.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have 161 Naperville Stormwater Plan 2024-06.
Applicant has presented a small stormwater application for approval. The applicant is opposing the destruction of a barn. The square footage exceeds 1,000 square feet, but is below 2,000 square feet. The plan has been approved by the township engineer. Listeners in office are quickly getting the stormwater management easement agreement that's for the board this evening, as well as the improvement guarantee agreement, and this is ready for action this evening.
I'll make the motion to approve a stormwater plan, stormwater management, easement agreement, and improvement guarantee agreement for improvements to be installed at 161 Naperville Road.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we got the culvert replacement project bid award.
So for two-plus years now, the township has been working to prepare for the replacement of two culverts, one at Hill and one in White Oak. You'll recall that the township did receive $298,000 grant from the county's allocation of ARCA dollars, and the township did this year budget the remaining ARCA dollars in our account for this project. Since we're open two weeks ago, the low bid was submitted by Brubaker, and the amount of approximately $805,000. Take a look at the low bid received and the dollars the township, the county has for the project. There are adequate funds to proceed with the bid award and to contract with this work. The work will take place next year.
And just as a reminder, it's the whole road culvert right out here at the township building on White Oak Road, so right over Smokes Town Road, there's a culvert right there that always floods when there's heavy rains. And I would like also to note, from two years ago to now, everyone knows how the cost of everything has gone up. This is at a 23% increase from two years ago till we got the bid. 27%. There was a 27% increase on this culvert project. Brubaker Escavating came in at $805,113. Crylon Corp. came in at $849,680.70. Construction Master Services LLC, $854,969.70.
I think there was what, was it five or six more bids than those three?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, the highest one was pushing a million dollars.
Over?
Over. This will help alleviate a flooding problem that pops up frequently on White Oak Road. Our fire chief there has said they've had water rescues there, what, several times over the years, and hopefully this is the key to preventing that from happening.
And it'll help out here as well. If our police officers are in the building and need to go left, the road won't be flooded here, so that'll help as well.
An access issue.
So I'll make a motion to award a bid for the culvert replacement project to Brubaker Escavating, Inc., Owensville, Pennsylvania, for lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of $805,000 and $805,113.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
As it does each year, the Board of Supervisors approves in September the minimum municipal obligations for pension funds provided by the township. There are two pension funds. You have the defined contribution pension fund for the non-uniformed employees and defined benefit pension fund for the uniformed employees. Our plan advisor has assembled the numbers for next year for the defined contribution plan, the MMO is $32,000, and for the defined benefit plan, the MMO is $226,575.
Okay? Got anything on that one?
Never.
Pretty straightforward. Motion, I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 minimum municipal obligations for the non-uniformed pension plan and for the uniformed pension plan in the amounts of $32,000 and $226,575.
Standing off, second, ma'am.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Treasures report.
Treasures report, sir. We have a general fund bank account listed bills in the amount of $89,519.84 for the week of September 5th, 2024, and $92,804.88 for the week of September 12th, 2024. Any questions on either one of those lists? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a streetlight fund listed bills in the amount of $14,212.90 for the week of September 12th, 2024. Any questions there? Just for a knowledge standpoint, this is our PPL bill every month for the streetlights throughout the township. Some months it's a little higher, some months it's lower. So seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a capital reserve fund listed bills in the amount of $3,324.89 for the week of September 12th, 2024. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a developers' fund listed bills in the amount of $2,320.50 for the week of September 5th, and $11,807.89 for the week of September 12th. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have electronic payment listed bills for the pay period of August 25th to September 7th of 2024 in the amount of $95,252.14. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's your treasurer's report today.
Thank you, sir. We're moving on to department reports. Chief?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. The chief's report for August 2024, relative discussion on arrest that was made was overdue. An effort man was charged with criminal trespass and theft by a multiple taking after a lengthy criminal investigation. In April of 2024, officers responded to the Comfort Inn, One Denver Road, for a report of theft on projects. Officers recovered hotel surveillance, video of a man that walked into the hotel, and he stole a guest service's laptop computer. And he did that the night before the officers responded. Officers used facial recognition software to identify the suspect. Further investigation supported the facial recognition, which led to identifying the suspect, and charges were filed, and he is currently awaiting his preliminary hearing. During the month of August, our live scan and identification system successfully completed the first transmission. If you remember, our department received 100% funding for the system back in May of 2024. It was through the Lancaster County Criminal Justice Advisory Board. During the summer months between May and August, we were waiting for the cabinet, the computer system, for the photographic equipment. It all was delivered. They sent a technician out, the technician set it up, and they also trained all of our officers to how to use the equipment. And since then, we've, that's how we fingerprint individuals now. And it's such a nice tool. We're finally up to the 21st century as far as we get instant notification if someone's wanted. We're literally rolling the fingerprints, and we get a phone call from Pennsylvania State Police telling us that their fingers are up a little bit too high, we need to move it down a little bit on the glass. And so it's instantaneous. So it's a very beneficial tool for us, especially if we have someone that, a John Doe, that we don't have any identifying information on. We performed a week-long speed study in the 100 block of North Greemstown Road. The average speed recorded was 29.1 miles per hour. The high speed recorded was 53 miles per hour. Again, that's a 25 mile per hour speed limit. We also conducted a week-long speed study in the 700 block of South Forest Street in Denver Borough. The average speed recorded there was 28.7 miles per hour. The highest speed recorded was 61, and that's a posted 25 mile per hour zone. During the month of August, officers performed a speed enforcement detail in the 1200 block of West Swartzville Road, Route 897. Officers issued 15 citations for speeding violations, and then officers performed another speed enforcement detail on the 100 block of North Greemstown Road, and issued 12 citations for speeding violations. I know it always seems like we're at the same location, but that's usually the, when we do these speed studies, that's how we determine where we need to run speed, and it always appears it's the same place. So that's why it seems like if we're done in that month here every month, saying almost like the same location.
It's not copy and paste.
That's right. During the month of August, our officers performed speed enforcement details, two of them in Denver Borough, one in the 700 block of North Sixth Street. There, they issued 10 citations for speeding violations, and also they performed a speed detail in the 200 block of East Lancaster Avenue and issued 18 citations for speeding violations. During the month of August, officers located four subjects in East Co'calico Township and one in Denver Borough. Each had outstanding arrest warrants. They were all turned over to judicial authorities. I know I touched on this briefly last month, even though I was, just because it was a surprise that just happened, but during the month, or actually on August 13th, officers participated in the 19th Annual National Night Out event, the Greemstown Park. If you don't mind, I'm going to thank people again for that because it is such a great event, and there's so many people to thank. But Officer Rachel organized, and numerous officers participated in this community event. This event was made possible by all the generous donations from local businesses throughout the Co'calico community, and we are blessed to have the support of all the volunteers that made that night successful. We would also like to recognize the Greemstown Fire Company, Stevens Fire Company, Smokes Town Fire Company, and the Denver Fire Company for volunteering their time and participating in the mock DUI crash that we had on this park. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Last week, with being there for Fair Week, I'd just like to congratulate you and some of your officers. There was some little scuffles around a fair couple different evenings, and they were very professional and doing a good job dealing with that, so.
Thank you.
If you would like to pass that on to them, they were in the right place at the right time. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, nothing to report for finance, public works or building, doing an SEO. New business? Gentlemen, you have any?
We're waiting for old business.
Sure.
Are we? I think we're good.
Old business?
You had mentioned earlier, talking about the police SSD, SSU, you know, it's pretty valuable. You had talked about waiting until the end of the year, the new company was going to be in place by then to make a decision, or what were your thoughts there, I guess?
Well, I had said, the new company made the announcement that it was going to be, take place, I guess, January 2nd, 2025. They said there wasn't any backing out anymore. So I had said we would wait till they had a meeting to decide if they wanted it. If they wanted it, we'll hold on to it till that goes into effect. I wouldn't want to donate it to them now because they don't have all their paperwork in mind, and then they're going to have to do two title transfers, and in my opinion, it doesn't look right. If we're going to donate it, we're going to donate it to Co'calico Area Fire Department. We're not going to donate it to Smokes Town Fire Company or Greemstown Fire Company. We're going to donate it to the new company like we had agreed on at the last meeting. So if that means wait till January 2nd, 25, that means we're going to wait till January 2nd, 25, if they want.
I will say, after the last meeting, I talked to one of the officers, I am with Matt, and I asked that question about titling, and it wouldn't make sense to do it before January because of name transfers and such. It would make sense to just do one transfer instead of two. So last, last meeting, I did not think about that until we addressed that, so I'm all for the new year, if they want. If not, we'll put on municipal. Okay? Just thank you for the clarity. We'll let it sit there for a while. Okay?
Anything else? No? Public comment. A five-minute per person limit for comment on non-agenda items. Please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Schuman, and I'm going to say because I think words matter, and I want to share certain things, and I don't want to get sidetracked. So I think it's just important to have it written. So on that, I want to say kudos to whoever wrote the most recent newsletter. I thought it was really well done. As someone who's lived here 18 years, I thought there was information in the newsletter that I had never seen before, never even met. And I could mention a couple examples, but my point is there was good topics in there, and I even passed it along to a friend because I knew he probably was going to read the newsletter, but it was perfect to him, so job well done.
I have to agree with that. I've heard a lot of residents compliment the new newsletter. I was, I was one of those people. Years and years ago, I would get it and not bring it. This time, they're colorful, a lot of nice images, and a lot of great topics.
So thanks for that. In the past time that I've lived here, I've only attended a few meetings in person, but I've watched online videos often on for a while, and I appreciate how the current board is working, and I want to say thanks for the Facebook page that you have for the supervisor and the option to watch things on YouTube is very good. Because I don't attend routinely, and I don't have your cell phone numbers, just to say a quick text, I want to be specific and point out and really be intentional in saying congrats for the April award that you guys had for the governor's award for local government excellence, because it's a big, long thing here where it says it was innovative planning, sound land use practices, I guess you guys call it FS4, farmers saving soil and stopping sediment, and I'm sure supervisory, you had a lot to do with this considering your background. When I hear about things like that and when I saw that, I realized that when a township does things where they get a governor's award, that wasn't just by chance. That wasn't because they casually did a little bit of work. That happens because they made a choice to be excellent in what you were doing. And there was focus, commitment, and a drive to make difference at a high level. That's the kind of township I really want to live in, and so I want to say thanks because I don't know that that's really common knowledge, that a governor noticed our township and what we're doing. I just think that's exceptional, and so I really do want to say thank you for that.
If I may interrupt. Yeah, the staff had a big portion in pulling that together. There was a lot of hours put into the concept. There was no blueprint out there for this. It was a concept that was absolutely taken and put together with a lot of obstacles in a way, but we can, we can now say we're in our third year of that program, and we're meeting, you know, all of our MS4 obligations for just a little bit over $30,000 a year. Prior to me being in office, they were looking at a Greemstown Park, Stream Bank Restoration Project that was getting up close to $700,000. So, you know, I'm proud of it. The staff should be proud of it. We brought consultants in, Matt Cream, he had a part, created an actual legal document to work with the farmers to save. to save having to go to a stream bank restoration project. You'll notice that there, we did have one put on our property right down here below the parking lot, the lower parking lot. That was, that was a...
Penn, wasn't it?
Turnpike. Turnpike.
Penn, uh?
Turnpike. Okay. Turnpike. They have MS4 requirements too. And they sought us out about being involved with them with an MS4 project that benefited them. It also benefits us. You can go down there and there's picnic tables there. There's hundreds of tree plantings coming, I think, what, another month or six weeks or so to replenish the ones that were taken out. But this will be a place where there will be a walking trail and picnic tables there. I think the board will be talking in the future about, you know, how to, you know, touch it up a little bit so that we can, you know, residents can come park there or walk down. Have a picnic, walk the trail with a dog or something else. So.
Sorry, the timer's not for you. Probably took about half. Time bridge for you.
We're taking five minutes.
Well, I apologize.
Be sure to leave it to you when it's done and then.
Some of the residents, you know, they're not necessarily aware of something. So it's always helpful to get information then. So if you still have about two or three minutes, it's still yours.
I just wanted to say I feel like our current leadership here is setting a good example. From my perspective, the board and township manager are working to benefit our residents here by serving us, to benefit us. It's not to benefit yourselves. And so I'm thankful that you are here right now at this township at this time using your gifts and skills to make this better for the community because I don't have this skill set. Do you know what I mean? Like, this is very much appreciated because I never had to do this. And although I don't know all of you personally, I do know that Lorenzo is a great business and is a fabulous boss to the young teenagers who work at Two Cousins. Many years ago, my son was one of his teens who had the privilege to work for Lorenzo. And my son is currently away on a mission trip. But when I told him I was going to come here and talk, he asked me to share a few thoughts after I sent him a pic of the tax collector's letter that was mailed to our home this week. So these are his words. Having personally known both Lorenzo and Jeff Mitchell for a considerable amount of time, I can speak to their strong reputations and integrity within the community, both that demonstrate a sound judgment and a commitment to civic duty, which makes any accusation for that them highly questionable. Knowing Lorenzo, I found him to be consistent and valued as a contributor to the community. His involvement and positive influence are well-recognized. And any claims to the contrary are unfounded. It is also important to note that the tax collector in her letter described herself as highly experienced in accounting and auditing. As an auditor myself, and again, I'm talking about my son. I understand the critical nature of clear communication in these matters. The fact that messages were missed or that communication was ineffective suggests a lack of attention to these responsibilities. This raises a broader question of whether we as citizens vatively held your office and the tax collector office accountable for such lapses. I look forward to hearing how the work case turns out. I'm not assuming we can talk about that very much, but the additional accusations made against these local leaders appear to lack proper foundation. And the language used to criticize them is both unproductive and inappropriate. Rather than spending money on postal mailings, wouldn't it make more sense when any future concerns are addressed through proper channels rather than public letters that create unnecessary division? So all this was from my 27-year-old, who sometimes has more wisdom in his ears than I do. But I just wanted to share that. I also find it interesting that a tax collector would know the legal fees that have been paid on a specific issue. Looking at your, you know, documents that you do share here tonight, how would someone know how much that is?
That happens through rate, like rate-to-no laws?
Yes.
There was rate, there was rate-to-noes put in, and that's how the individual got the amounts.
And so that costs money from a legal perspective as well because of the bottom line rate-to-noes, isn't that correct?
Picks up staff.
Picks up staff.
Yeah. So I really just want to say thanks for being here, for showing up week, every few weeks, for all the stuff you do behind the scenes. I truly appreciate that you guys are making the community better for me and my neighbors I also know. I also appreciate that you prepared for the meetings, but know that I'm grateful for you. And I just want you to continue to do what you're doing. Very appreciated.
Thank you.
Ni, mani, pora, Hoffman. I did miss the agenda that our students submitted, agenda items. This is the fire company. Please let me speak. Okay. Now I've gone to church with a lot of you guys. I've run calls with you guys. I've been in the fire company over 50 years. My husband was chief for over eight years. There's a present I haven't had in years. It was called mutual aid. It's called work together. It was called, it was called, you know, one call, people can get out. That happens. We've covered companies, they've covered for us. Why do we, and yes, Mr. Burden, you were right. Some of it is pride. You said, I couldn't count the last two months. But some of it is pride. But some of it is also our identity. We give, we do children's, what do we do? The egg hunt, we do a Christmas party, we do Halloween, we do, we do a, what do you do?
The fire prevention.
The fire prevention for the children. We have a place for people to walk. That won't change. Why do we have to give our number? How many trucks do you guys do you have to renumber? Seven, eight? We have four. We have to take the money because they wanted to change, to paint it. I know it's not going to change anything, but I can't sit there. I really can't. I'm sorry. You said about the numbers being different on, on calls. It used to be 17, you know, chief 17, something like that. It's because other companies and guys, I'll run with you, I'll support you. You know that. I just don't see why we have to lose... You're talking about, are we going to lose our funding? Is that what's eventually going to happen? We've lost running distance. We don't, we don't just run, it needs to be Calico. We run in Denver, West Co'kalico, and up into townships. I mean, I've been in the fire company. I ran. My last call, I was six months pregnant. But to make us change everything, we have to change... I know we need pays the codes. I know we need pays gears. But that's armed, that's money we have to spend. It doesn't, it goes over. We finance our, Mr. Rissough, you guys, we get our books into you on time so that you can audit it. We just had our books audited so that we can hand it in to you guys. And we do it on time. And I, sorry, Kim, I'm going to do this. You know what I'm going to do. I can't seem to think that this all started when Chad died last year. I know it started, but it seems like it's been, everything's been rushed. And, I mean, our guys are great. Their guys are great. And we do mutual aid. And we do things together. But you're telling us we have to change our identity again? I, I'm not saying what's going to happen in the future. Our guys are getting older, their guys are getting older. I don't know what the next generation's going to do. I know more companies aren't allowing people to take off work anymore. Schools are allowing children to go to fire calls anymore. It's making a big difference. And I don't know why I'm saying this, but it really hasn't got to... I mean, guys, you know me. And I don't talk a lot. You know me too. I mean, you guys all know me. I've been in this area my whole life. I moved two houses down from where I lived at when I was four. I mean, my fire, the fire hall was built, the community, the, the social hall. That was my honeymoon. We didn't go anywhere. We built the fire hall. The year my mother died, we, we were building and we dedicated the, the station. Yeah, it is a lot of pride in our town. And like I said, you said you're going to get more momentum. You're going to get more, more responding. How do you get more responding? There's only so many guys to go around. Yes, you're going to be one big company. But you're going to have to have two companies going. You're going to have one. I, I don't know if I'm explaining this right. Can anybody else explain? I know you're watching my time, Mr. Burden, I believe. But I'm very passionate about this. I mean, I've, I've known Denver. I've known, we run with Denver. Yes, Denver did get out twice before we do. I don't know how they do it. They must have guys in the hall. But I can't see why we have to give up our number. Thank you.
So, so I will thank you for your service to start off.
Does he want to interrupt you?
I didn't want to interrupt you. You were going, so I wasn't going to interrupt you. And if you have something to say after, you can still say it. I'm not going to tell you to go sit. Personally, I can speak for myself. I don't speak on behalf of the board. I know there's a lot of people that think and say other things out in the community, and they can say whatever they want. Before I was a supervisor, and I've been in the community 19 years now, I've always supported all first responders, whether it's Ephra, Akron, Beaumontville, Denver, Stevens, Adamstown, Rehymstown, Smokes Town, Shannick, Ryanhold, and I can go on forever as a business owner. And I will continue to do that. And I always said that if I become a supervisor one day, I'll never stop supporting my first responders, no matter who. And it's not to toot my horn. I'm just trying to speak on behalf of myself to, you know, if there's people wondering what I'm all about. Now that I'm sitting here, I have a responsibility for the constituents of the township. Everyone keeps bringing up, not, not recently, it's been brought up even from when I first started two and a half years ago, of we're going to have paid services one day. We're going to have this, we're going to have that. And everyone says, do you know how much it costs for a paid fire department? People are complaining about our school taxes going up 5.35% this past year. And the township raised taxes pennies on the dollar last year. We have a paid fire department. Our taxes are going to go through the roof. So going, I've been going to all these PSATs, meetings up in Harrisburg that they do once a year. PSATs, Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. And when I was there this past year, I wrote a sheet. The biggest thing all township supervisors were talking about, and this was a topic, was their biggest concern was first responders. It's not just here. It's everywhere. So throughout the county, everyone talks about merging, working together, trying to get more people, how to recruit people, give incentives, tax credits, whatever. In our situation, we have these two departments that are coming to us because they're merging. And I don't know, I don't know the reason. I don't want to know the reason because obviously, we always hear a whole bunch of different things. Why Stevens won't join, or other departments won't join. But they're taking the first step, thinking about the future of firefighting in East Co'kalico Township.
Excuse me, you don't think we are?
I was going to get to there. So at this time, I see that they're doing that. You guys are hanging there, Adamstown, Denver, and everyone else is hanging there. My thought is, okay, are they doing that so they see how it goes once they start up? And then they're going to talk to join? Or are they doing that because they really don't want to be a part of the future of the township in firefighting? That's the big question mark in my head right now. So.
Is that what you think of us, though? Because you just said them merging. Is, are they thinking of the future of the township? You don't think Stevens isn't thinking of the future for the township?
I hope you are.
We are.
I hope you are.
But that's not what it made it sound like to all these other people talking about firefighting.
So what I'm saying is I hope Stevens, Adamstown, and Denver, and everyone else is thinking about the future. Right now, I can only speak on behalf of what has been presented to us. I'm not a firefighter. I'm not a fire chief. I don't work for the county. I'm just a volunteer up here. So with what information we gather...
We lost our biggest voice.
What's that?
We lost our biggest voice.
Who's that?
Chad. Again, I'm sorry. But we did lose our biggest voice and our biggest fighter. Yes, we are, we're doing, we're tooling. And it takes a while to get back on our feet. But we've done it before. It's like somebody says, well, they're going to quit. Well, you quit, somebody else will step in and issues. And it is called mutual aid. I know sometimes they go out for us. I know sometimes we go out for them. It used to be that, oh, you get together, you decide what trucks to own. Yeah, they're going to do it together now because Stevens is going to be left out. Are we going to, are they going to try to pull more of the township money in? Is it also because we're sitting on over a million dollars of the land? How many acres of land do we have?
16.
16 acres of land. Some of it farms, some of it not. We have, we have a farmer farming some of it. We put a park up for the kids. There's nothing in Stevens to do. They said what the fire company does. I don't know if that's, we have three fundraisers next month? Three fundraisers next month. We also have two community services next month. I'm going to send them a write-off. It's October. I can't say we, we... We see what the other companies do, and they're doing great. Don't get me wrong, they're great. I, I love community. I love these guys. Because you have to love them. If you don't love them and trust them, you wouldn't go into a fire with them. And I don't care that they merge, but why do we have to lose our identity when they decided to merge?
Can I ask you this?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry. Nobody's questioning pride. Nobody's questioning the integrity of your department, the service to the community. Nobody's questioning any of that. And I think I've made that very clear the last four or five months we've been talking about this. I've sat down with your chief. I've sat down with all the chiefs.
Sanwobi.
Yep. I've sat down with all of your chiefs, all the chiefs of our, of East Co'kalico and surrounding their townships and municipalities.
Village.
Village. I sat down with all the chiefs of the fire departments. I've had them all in the same room together. We are all facing a mountain. All of these departments are facing a mountain. And I know you are as well. And I know if you're not having conversations, I know you are. If you're not having conversations about the future, you're wrong and you're going to lose. Right? And that's what the conversation was with all of our fire chiefs and all of our departments. The biggest problems, apparatus, personnel, so volunteers, and money. And all of those go hand in hand. You want the cool gear for your personnel, you get your volunteers, you want all the apparatus. But when you, when you get all the chiefs in the same room, we're looking at apparatus here. We got, I don't know the names of the apparatus because I'm sorry. We have a tanker here, and a tanker here, and a tanker here, all within one township. Those are million-dollar trucks each, and each of them are getting older. Right?
How much does a truck cost? How much does a tanker cost? There's an old red truck maybe did.
Yeah. Doesn't matter what it cost before. What they cost now is over a million dollars. And it takes you, you know, over a year or two to get them at the quarter of the day. So when we're looking at these things, I'm not trying to take your identity. I'm not changing anything about Smokes Town Fire Department. You guys, and Stevens.
That's right. Smokes Town, I said at the last meeting I was at, that they're still keeping their name and their number behind their bus screen unless that changed.
And so nobody's taking your identity as Stevens Fire Department. Not at all. Nothing at all. It's a number. Your number changed, what, 15 years ago as well? And I, and, and it's a number. Okay? When we're looking at from a safety perspective, when it's going, you know, when it's hot and everybody's coming together and you're looking for Chief 17, and this is where I'm, this is what Jeff was talking about before, and I'm trying to learn this stuff too. If you have Chief 17, or Chief 17.3, or Chief, it can get confusing. So nobody's trying to take Stevens' identity. Nobody's saying that you guys have not served this community. God knows the services that our fire departments give to our community are in the millions of dollars every year, the services they can provide for free to our community.
Who is going to pay for having the trucks renamed? Now, relief will take care of, I'm assuming relief will take care of the, the gear. But you're talking trucks. We have four trucks. We never do our own truck because that's our price piece. Like, Rehymstown's a price piece and it's beautiful. We're going to have to re, we just redid our trucks. And I don't... And I don't know how much it costs. I can't always get to meetings. I'm sorry, I'm taking my time. And I just wanted everybody to know that it has nothing to do with anybody else. It's just why do we have to change when they decided to change?
I guess you've got to look at it from our perspective, but I don't know if that's.
It doesn't do any good. And I'm being quite honest with you.
We had, we had two fire chiefs come in and talk to us.
Yeah, you had Rehington and Smokes Town.
Right?
Obie has two farms, he's out of the farms.
Well, I'd like to hear it from him too, but he didn't, he hasn't shown up. But anyway, it was preached to us that this is a safety issue.
It's not a safety issue. It's called mutual aid, guys. You remember that.
Mutual aid does not have to do with your numbers. Your numbers changed fifteen years ago. They're still the same when your building was fifteen years ago, right? So let's look at, we're trying to do what's best for the township.
What is best, why is this best for the township, though? Because are you guys, I don't know much about the merger. Are you guys consolidating your equipment? So you, Smokes Town will have to run wherever the other company is, wherever they, unless you decide. At one time, you guys were talking about building land together, buying land near the turnpike.
What they're going to do with their equipment is between them and their merger.
Okay, I just wanted to know. You already paid to change, I need one, sorry. If either change theirs, that's what's meant to stand in. I'm not talking, I know you guys aren't changing your minds. But I, I think we're going to be pushed out of this whole thing in the long run.
We would rather not see that.
But I have a feeling it's going to happen.
My opinion, and my opinion doesn't matter. I'd rather see you guys continue to be a great part of the community. Whatever that means to you guys, I don't know. I'd love to see you guys stay in the community and be a part of.
Oh, we will.
Be a part of the community and perhaps one day be a part of the Calico Area Fire Department or whatever other department that serves our community.
And sixty-five, that'll probably be in another twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes.
You guys don't have that, except I just don't want to lose that for now. And it doesn't make sense why we have to change ours.
And my comments are going to be based on the letter that was sent to every resident. And first, I would like to thank the board and manager for their leadership regarding East Calico Township, regarding the East Calico Township Tax Collector. I would also like to thank the manager for his work and effort to ensure this year's tax rolls are delivered to residents on time. And I would also like to thank or recognize township solicitor for navigating the delicate work required and holding an elected official accountable. Although the tax collector's office is independent, the board is responsible to ensure tax revenues are collected timely and efficiently in order to fund the necessary functions of the township. Regarding the East Calico Tax Collector's letter, it is dated September fifth, 2024. I have a question because the tax collector stated in the letter that only a few residents complained. Was it only a few or was it actually more than a few? Is that a question?
From my understanding, there was probably over a hundred between businesses and residents.
Okay. That's what I thought.
I have, I have plenty of them right here that it's not even a quarter of them, but if asked, I could go down the list and kind of read what the complaints were about. This is just a few of them.
All right, thank you. Regarding complaints, the tax collector characterized residents' complaints as mundane childish items, which devalues and criticizes taxpayers that have legitimate complaints. Further, I believe that Supervisor Burton was fully aware of the tax collector's situation prior to his vote. And to insinuate that Supervisor Mitchell was responsible for employees leaving the township office is false and misleading. And to bring up, in absent, and to bring up an abstention vote on a completely different matter made by Chairman Benora leads me to believe that the letter is only intended to disparage and smear sitting supervisors with false and misleading allegations. Money spent ensuring taxes are available to run the township by holding the township tax collector accountable is money well spent. There have been other allegations, in particular litigation posed by two residents that exceeded this current lawsuit amount. Finally, to state that this board supervisors, supervisors will sue you if you do not do what they want or agree with them or if they don't like you is ludicrous and unconscionable. And the statement, when not, when not if you will be sued by the board, is frankly an unbelievable statement by an elected official. Because of the previously stated information in the letter sent to all taxpayers of East Calico Township, I as a resident recommend that the tax collector and those that are advising her consider that she resign immediately. Thank you.
Anyone else, please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes.
I'm Audrey Huber. Good evening. I would just like to understand what would make it safer to change the call signs? What about makes it safer?
We heard from two of the fire chiefs that when they were on the scene, that confusion could happen with the seventeen number. And they're in the.
Was it, isn't it seventeen-one, seventeen-two, seventeen-three?
I'm just asking a little more.
Okay, well then, can I hear from you why it won't be safer?
It might be safer.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to just have a Chief Seventeen for the new department. So that we're not going to have a Chief Seventeen-one, Seventeen-two, Seventeen-three anymore. We're just going to have a Chief Seventeen.
Chief Seventeen.
And a Deputy Seventeen.
And a Deputy Seventeen.
Yes.
So who's becoming chief and who's becoming deputy?
When we have the election to figure that out.
But we're not part of that election because we haven't chosen to merge.
Okay, that's correct. So when it's the seventeen number, it's going to be the new department officers. We keep seventy, it's just going to be so confusing. I mean, county even recommended that a number gets changed.
Then why don't you change your number? Because you're already changing everything.
Because there's more than just changing trucks. All the gear says seventeen, all that has to get repaired. All the radios have to get reprogrammed. It's a whole, it's a, so in the end, it's going to be more expensed. But honestly, if you go past Stevens Fire Company, it says station one ten on it. So seventeen didn't mean that much, or they would change that number on front of the building.
So if I call my husband right now and say, hey, what's the number on the front of the building? Says one-ten? So then why would it change the last time?
What do you mean change the last?
Why was the number changed the last time with the merger?
The merger, but I, I can probably help just believe it.
Yeah.
So back when they went to a digital radio system. First of all, you, you were forever, since, since the nineteen-sixties, Stevens was one-ten. Rehington was one-seven. And Smokes Town was one-eleven. Those were our call signs when radio communications first came into play. I think it's in the late sixties. The way you got that designation was strictly by alphabetical order in what they then called zones. And zones would have been like the Calico and the after-school systems. That's how we got our numbers from the beginning. Then we trucked down the road and we got to this new digital system. So we're moving forward, this is progress, right? Now county with their infinite wisdom can no longer use three numbers with a dash in it to identify each station. So we had to go to a single number. Well, our number worked because we just had to take the dash out and it was seventeen. So the other two departments came and asked Rehington if they could utilize our number and we would number seventeen-one, seventeen-two, and seventeen-three in the hopes that moving forward, we're all going to, it seemed like we were united. And the ultimate. What's that? And we were waiting on a merger, hoping that merger was going to proceed. It didn't. It failed several times and we all went out over time because of little personal issues, whatever. So now, here we are, and there's still seventeen-one, seventeen-two, seventeen-three. The new department's hopefully going to operate. And I don't know if it's so much safety as it is efficiency and effectiveness on when we start to number our equipment. So we right now have enough equipment to go from seventeen-one to three, but we can't use three because you have that. So now we've got to go numbering our own equipment in our own department. We've got to go seventeen-one, two, four. Three is no longer part of it. So it makes it confusing for our own personnel, for county, for everyone else that's involved. And I think the biggest reason we're, the steering committee was asking, and that's the merger committee, is asking to keep the seventeen number is because it was Rehington's number. We are going to indeed use Rehington's charter for the new department. We just felt that was fair. That's the only reason that we're looking to keep that. And we did believe it's more cost-effective for us to carry that number and renumber and reletter a whole lot and redo a whole lot less radios than it is for Stevens to renumber. And, you know, I'll iterate what I said two weeks ago at Smokes Town. We still, like, this has nothing to do, this isn't a vendetta against Stevens. We still hope to work, and we do now work very well together with Stevens. I mean, that I don't think is going to change at all. But for the effectiveness, the efficiency of that new department, we feel better if we can start, and he's right, we would have achieved seventeen and a Deputy Seventeen. They would have no additional number behind that. So it allows our department to grow in the future, the whole way through the seventeen spectrum. If we, at some point, so just say Stevens would, and I'm praying they do, at some point they decide that we do want to go. That engine can automatically jump right in at seventeen-three. Because we'll have seventeen-one, seventeen-two, seventeen-three. That engine will be right back in its own number.
But until then, we have to change, but until then, we have to start.
Yeah, and I think that it has to be one of the things that we had this meeting in June or July. All three fire chiefs from East Calico, including your chief, were there, and we all agreed, we all understood what has to happen. And I think that the only debacle to this system was that you got voted no at the meeting to change. I'm not sure your chief is opposed to it. So I'm not sure what the big issue is.
I think the biggest issue for me personally is where is the money going to come from? We're going to have to now do more fundraisers and things like that just to change all our numbers.
Well, you got to, you have to reletter, I think, you have to reletter where, three or four pieces of equipment?
We have to reletter five pieces of equipment.
You have to change the seventeen-three. Now seventeen-three is an available number. So had that been picked, I believe it's X-ing out a dash and taking away one, and you already have it. But I don't think that's, you're not talking excessive money to do four or five vehicles. And everything else is paid for by these Calico Township Fire Department's relief. So your gear is going to get changed, but it's less gear to change. So that means the relief is going to save money. We don't have to reprogram as many radios, which means relief saves money because they pay for that. So the only thing that I see that you would be paying for, unless I'm missing something, would be to reletter the numbers on your, on your equipment. Everything else is already bought and paid for for you or for ops, whoever, whoever changed it. But it sounded like we already have a seventeen after this meeting, so. But there's not a ton of upfront cost to this.
I guess to me, it just feels very childish and petty and very like high school, just to throw money around or just to throw weight around. So.
Well, I don't know, who's throwing the weight around?
Any. Any of your hands?
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes. Good evening, gentlemen. First, I want to thank the sitting board, Mr. Ryan, Matt Crank, for your work in leading the township. There's been a lot of work that you guys had to do in the past couple of years. You've taken it on without flinching. You faced a lot of criticism, a lot of challenges. Yet you hold your head high and you continue focusing on the township and where we're going and where we want to go. So I applaud you for that and I thank you for those efforts. I want to take a moment and address the letter that apparently everyone in not only East Calico, but almost West Calico received as well, from what I'm hearing. When I first read that letter, I was appalled that a public official, an elected official, would resort to this level of intimidation, is what it is. And then I was very, very angry at the blatant PR attempt to gain and try this case in the court of public opinion. That's just wrong for an elected official to take that track. The annuation, or insinuations, the accusations, with the total lack of any fact presented in that case, is not only sad, but is also an indication of her performance as a tax collector. Finally, if this were a normal company and she was the head accountant in that company and these same things were leveled against her, and she failed to do her job like this, there wouldn't be a lawsuit involved. She would have lost her job. Gone. But because she's an elected official, you guys had no choice but to really take it this way to get her to do her job. The facts are clear to anyone who wants to read the court documents, to go back and review the meeting minutes, listen to the video. It's all out there to be had if you do your research. But I just think it's very, very wrong for an elected official to take this approach and try to intimidate the board, the solicitor, maybe even the judge in this case. The court of public opinion has no bearing and no business being involved in this. So again, thank you, gentlemen, for all your hard work. Thank the staff for everything they've done in the past couple of years to turn this township around and get us running smooth. I really appreciate it, and I think I echo everything and everyone in here who is a citizen and a resident of East Calico. We appreciate the work you guys do. We can see it day to day, month to month. So thank you. Keep up the good work and know that we stand behind you. Please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes. Okay? Last call? All right. Seeing none, I'd like to make a, I don't even know. The board will meet in executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss in specific East Calico Township versus the Tax Collector Joe Corrigan. The next meeting will be Thursday, October third, at seven PM here at East Calico Township Building. And I will make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Motion is second, all in favor of the aye. Motion carries. Thanks for coming out. Have a great evening.